Meeting for November 28th, 2022, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk Deaton, please let the roll call show. All council members are present. And we'll move on to the approval of the city council minutes November 14th, 2022. Councilmember Kibble.
I'll move the minutes in a second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. No bills this evening. We'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Councilmember Kennedy.
I'll move the agenda.
I support.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, we are approving the revised agenda. Is that correct?
That would be correct. Thank you for pointing that out, Councilmember Hanson. So yes, the revised agenda that was out there for everyone as well. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Tonight's consent agenda includes the Holiday Spectacular, credit card policy, and historical commission appointment. Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the consent agenda as presented by the mayor. I'll support.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. We have a special proclamation this evening. Chief, thank you if you wouldn't mind coming up to the speaker or the microphone. This is proclamation for Police Chief Christopher Sovick this evening. Whereas Christopher Sovick, a veteran police officer with over thirty years of service to the city of South Lyon, and whereas the city of South Lyon City Council, along with the entire community, would like to honor the contribu- the contributions of that Chief Sovick has made during his law enforcement career. And whereas Chief Sovick earned a Bachelor of Arts degree in Psychology from Oliviette Nazarene University in 1990, and a Master's degree in Criminal Justice Management from Columbia Southern University in 2011. He's also a graduate of the Federal Bureau of Investigations 248th National Academy class in 2012. And whereas Chief Sovick started his law enforcement career when he joined the South Lyon Police Department in 1991. His assignment started in the Patrol Division where he became a field training officer shortly after being hired. He was promoted to Sergeant in February of 1997 and to Lieutenant in April of 2013, and became our Chief of Police in 2019. And whereas Chief Sovick has attended hundreds of advanced training classes throughout his career, including professional executive development seminars and the Police Executives and New Chief School hosted by the Michigan Associate of Chief of Police. He is a member of the FBI National Academy Associates Session 248, International Associate of Chiefs of Police, Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police, and serves as the Treasurer for the Oakland County Chiefs of Police Association. In addition to his administrative duties, Chief Sovick has been instrumental in preparing the department's budget for the past nine years and has been responsible for the department's annual reports since its expansion in 2013. Now, therefore, I, Daniel L. Pelchat, Mayor of the city of South Lyon, and on behalf of the South Lyon City Council, hereby commend the outstanding community service performed by Christopher Sovick during his law enforcement career of over thirty years, and we all wish him the best in his retirement.
Should we start passing around the donation basket here? Key to the city. I'm not sure if it's back here somewhere, but anyway. No, listen, it's been a great...
You take your time, Chief.
Seems like just yesterday I was twenty-four. Believe I was called to serve in this capacity in this city for a reason, and so I just got the calling. So it's been a great career. Thirty-one years is a long time for... To be in one job in one place for so many years, it's just been blessed. It's afforded me a life outside of work. This came from. Wasn't quite expecting this, but um... You know, to raise three kids and put them through school and... It's just been so rewarding of a career for thirty-one years. I spend my home away from home. I spend so much time here. And I'm invested in the city even though I have to move here, but um... I think it's been a win-win for the city and for me and my family as long as I've been here. Me and my dad instilled a good work ethic in me when I was younger. And so... You know, the city's benefited from that over the thirty-one years I've been here. Really don't think I changed anything. I've worked with some amazing people over the years. I appreciate the support that we've gotten from council since I became the chief. It's just been, it's been a really, really great experience. And um... Lieutenant Baki and I got a really chance to put our stamp on this place, and that's going to continue, so. Thank you. I wasn't expecting it. It's been a roller coaster emotionally for the last couple of days. Knowing that Wednesday is going to be it, but... I remember signing my retirement papers and thinking, man, this is, you know, I thought I'd be excited, but I really wasn't. It's kind of uneasy and kind of unsure, but the closer I'm getting to it, the more I'm getting used to it, but... I'm going to continue working someplace else. I got some things in the fire right now, but um... Yeah, it's been great. I'm just, I'm really going to miss the people that I work with. It's been a great... I mean, South Lyon is really like my second home, and so I've been blessed to work with such, with some great people. And I'm definitely going to miss it, but the city of South Lyon, the public safety is in really, really good hands with Chief Thorington and Chief Baki coming on, so. It's, it's, I just, I want to think... Just want to keep on saying it's been a great run, but it's been, it's been just fantastic, man. It's just gone by so quickly, but um... It's been great, so thank you for the proclamation. Proclamation. I appreciate the kind words and everything, and uh... I'll stop back from time to time, but you won't see me very often, so. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Chief. Okay. Thank you again, Chief. We'll move on to our public comment this evening. Please remember to state your name and address and remember our two-minute time limit.
Hello, council. My name's Carl Richards. So many things I could talk about, and uh, this Chief Sovick's a tough act to follow. But uh, I just thought I would mention one thing that was very important, I guess, and very notable. We had a wonderful concert last night in the historic village for the Dulcimers. And uh, we've done it every year for several years. Regrettably, I wasn't there as, uh, it was too, too late and uh, bad weather for me to get out there. But I talked to Linda Rose Ross, and she said it's all right to mention it and make sure you get things well spoken. The concert was well attended. It went over beautifully. Everybody was very happy. And she mentioned that Steve and his wife were there also. I imagine Steve will say something later. And from here on in, the rest of this week, it's pushed for the uh, the third coming up, this Saturday, I believe. Okay, we have the, the winter festival and the final preparations for everything is underway. And I'm sure that they, Linda and Larry have the teams set up just how they want them to get everything done. And I look forward to being there, and Dan will be there, I hope, passing out the keys to the city or something like that. Okay, that's all for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Richards.
Hello, I'm Judy Stevens, and I would like to thank Kelly Spalding for taking care of the problem that we had at the bus stop. What was made into a bus stop at the entrance to Colonial Acres at Eleven Mile and Heritage. I alerted her to potential problems. She sent out an email. I don't know exactly what steps she took, but she sent out an email at least, contacted the people involved, and she thought the problem was solved. When I alerted her to the fact that it wasn't solved, she personally went to the parents, talked to them, and they changed the bus stop because we were really worried about it. There was a lot of people that were concerned. Everybody was right on the corner. There was kids, there was cars. It was just, it was an accident waiting to happen. And second, I would like to know if there's plans to replace the traffic light at Silver Lake Road and Pontiac Trail. Thank you.
Thank you. We will close our public comment, and we'll move on to the discussion of downtown with DDA Director Nate Mack.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. I hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving. First of all, I just wanted to say congrats, Chief Sovick, on his retirement. I've only been here for a couple of years, but it has been great working with him and the Police Department and Fire as well. Moving on, so we have the garland that will be going up on the light poles downtown tomorrow. I spoke with DPW today. They're assembling the garland, putting the lights on it. They'll be taking down the corn stocks, and then that'll be going up tomorrow. As people may or may not know, the Holiday Spectacular is set to take place this Saturday. We have a great lineup of events that are happening, starting at ten AM at McCatty Park with the Parks and Rec doing business with Santa, then at eleven AM, they're going to be doing the Candy Cane Hunt. And then all throughout the day, from eleven until late at night, with the Carl and Joanne Foundation's Christmas, Christmas event that they have going on. But I wanted to, instead of going into the finer details of all the, all the things we have happening downtown, talk about the road closures briefly. So Lafayette Pontiac Trail will be closed from Whipple Street down to McCatty Street. I got my notes here, so I don't miss anything, beginning at ten AM, and it'll go until seven PM or whenever the parade concludes. So Lafayette Street will remain closed from McCatty to essentially Elm Place after the parade for the Carl and Joanne Foundation's Christmas Corner event. Until that event concludes, I believe they're scheduled to go until midnight. So it'll be probably around one AM when the roads open up again, or when Pontiac Trail completely opens up again. There'll be closures on Lake Street as well, Ten Mile at Wells Street to the east, and then just in front of Phillips Funeral Home to the west. Liberty Street will be closed to through traffic at Washington Street, and will be fully closed at the intersection of Liberty and Lafayette Streets. And then on the east side of Liberty, the street will be closed to through traffic at Wells, at the Wells and Liberty intersection, I believe. Northbound traffic coming from the south on Lafayette Street will be able to use Reynolds Suite Parkway as a means to get around the road closures. They'll open, again, like I said, they'll open back up once the parade has finished, with the exception of the event footprint of the Carl and Joanne's Christmas Corner for that event. There will be no additional road closures for the horse and carriage rides they're able to operate on, on roads as they normally are with a slow-moving vehicle sign. We're also continuing to work on the lights downtown to make sure they look good for the event this weekend. Couple of other things. I was notified by Main Street Oakland County today that they're going to be bringing a micro-business finance presentation to South Lyon or Lyon Township. They're going to combine the two. So I've corresponded with the Lyon Township DDA Director today to kind of figure out a date, probably be January or February, and then a location either in South Lyon or Lyon Township. So we're still trying to iron that out, but we'll have more information on that as we, as we go ahead. And you've probably noticed that the huge tree at Heinan Inn Engineering was decorated, or has been decorated, and the spire has gone up as well. So we're really in the full swing of the holiday season now that we're, you know, past Thanksgiving and really getting, getting into the Christmas season. So with that, that's the end of my report, but if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I was just curious, in the event that the festivities going on in the park run a little bit long because the parade may delay things or something, is there something that's taking place downtown that's going to likely have people that are still over at the park miss something because of that lapse?
So I believe there's enough gap time between different events that most of the people should be able to finish and even kind of hang around a little bit and then get to the next thing downtown, so.
Anyone else got anything for Nate tonight? Okay. Thanks, Nate.
All right, thank you.
We'll have Chief Thorington and the Fire Chief report on.
Good evening. So this weekend, we are going to be giving Santa Claus a ride in our ladder truck, our last hurrah. I was hoping to be in the new ladder truck by now. It's um, it's not. So our ladder truck is currently listed with Brynley. There's only been one person who's reached out from Alabama, and they had no further interest at this time, so it's still listed. The new ladder truck, we're waiting on the adjuster and the insurance companies to work things out. It seems like an extremely slow process. It's frustrating. I know our salesperson for the truck is also very frustrated in the process, and he's putting pressure on him. So we'll see. Hopefully he gets this thing rolling pretty soon. I was hoping to have it by now, to be honest. So it is what it is. It should be early next year, it looks like at this point, but we won't know anything until the adjuster, you know, finalizes everything. We installed a new thermal imaging camera, which is budget for this year's budget, on the fire engine, Engine 701. It's amazing the quality of images and how much that will help us in the future. You can see inside walls for fire, for heat. But more importantly, our old cameras can do that too, not quite the clear picture, but more importantly now, in a structured fire, where through decreased visibility, it's dark, smoky, we can just hold the camera up and you can see body outlying, almost like a night vision camera of a person, so we can go straight to them to rescue them as opposed to waste our time, you know, searching when we could go straight to them and pull them out. So it's a pretty significant upgrade in camera, and I appreciate that. Our smoke alarm and carbon dioxide program is now in operation. Received some alarms for both from the state. There's a new recording process. We have to use an app to record it to the state so we can, are eligible for more in the future. We do have carbon dioxide detectors now as well as smoke alarms to install. We've installed a couple so far. And lastly, I'd like to thank Chief Sovick myself. I know I haven't been here very long, but um, he definitely made the transition much, much easier for me. He's very welcoming, helped me get my feet in the ground and kind of learning the ins and outs of the city, so I appreciate his, his help as well. That's all I have.
Councilmember Dill.
Just something quick I thought of. So if we don't sell the old ladder truck for a while, where will we keep it? And will that be like a really expensive insurance situation to keep it insured?
Uh, no, we'll put the basic insurance on. Actually, I think we're sold insured to some extent. We'll put basic insurance on it. It won't be on the road. We can drain it, drain the water out. We could sit it outside. Ideally, we'll sit it inside of the garage. Yeah, they'll make room. They've worked with us in the past, so hopefully it'll sell. That's, fingers crossed, is the most optimal.
Yeah.
But if not, we'll, we'll make do and get the new truck serviced as soon as possible.
All right. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the Police Chief Report with Chief in future and Lieutenant Baki at the moment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Thank you, council. Just got a couple of things to make note of. Number one, our truck came in today, so we're really pleased about that. And now it's just to get it on the road, get it moving, and get it where it needs to be for our, for our fleet of vehicles. And the succession plan is working. Will be set up with Chief Sovick and I. We had this plan in place. And I know, you know, a few years ago when he took the chief's job, I said, hey, look, I'm good with you being chief until I retire as lieutenant. You really don't have to go. He's done such a great phenomenal job in helping me through this process. I can't say more than thank you so much for how you did what you did. He really, especially the last month when he's on vacation, I was pretty much by myself, which... But um, he was there with phone call away, any questions that I needed. He was there, and he really, really was a great mentor for me, and he was a, a, a good friend. He is a good friend. And he will be surely missed. He really put his mark on this department. And again, I want to thank you for, for all what you've done for me as well as the department. And um, you know, it's going to be, you know, moving forward. We all put together these plans to make it run smooth, smooth as glass is what we were saying. So we are looking into getting into the future, our next leaders in the department. We've already started doing that, and we've already set up for the, the policies when it comes to our accreditation, so that's all done. So he really, really did put his mark on this department, so. And that's all I got. Any questions for me?
Right. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
So Doug, you got the truck. Has it been outfitted, all the equipment transferred?
Just got it today. I'm kind of looking at what we're going to do with it. I've got a call in to one of our outfitters. He wanted to see the, what's in the vehicle and see what he, he can do to do that. I've got to get an estimate on it. My, my worry is, is that we can't get another interceptor, the Explorer interceptors. We have it on order. Now chip shortage, supply chain, we can't get it. So I'm looking at, you know, possibly making this into a vehicle that will be able, for General Patrol, to take calls. That would be a supervisor vehicle. I haven't quite pulled the trigger on it yet. I want to see what the price is. But I'm also waiting for that twenty-four to come in, or I'm sorry, that twenty-three to twenty-twenty-three to come in. And I, he can't give me a time, so I, I don't know when that's going to come in. So we do have this vehicle brand new, and I just hope that it'll work out that we can use it as a supervisor vehicle, which I think we should be able to.
Okay. Thanks. All right. Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the CDBG Public Hearing. City Manager Zelnik, did you want to read the explanation of the topic?
Yes, Mayor. Each year, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development provides fundings to jurisdictions throughout the county for projects that meet the national objectives. Here in South Lyon, we receive funds through HUD via Oakland County. This coming year, our tentative allocation will be $28,511. Last year, the city designated the funds to be used for the Senior Center in Haven. The 2023 CDBG application deadline for receiving the funds is Friday, December 23rd, 2022. On November 10th, 2022, the city published notice of the CDBG hearing, which tonight gives the opportunity for hearing public comments relative to the allocation of those funds in the city of South Lyon. I've attached information for council, the 2023 CDBG Public Hearing Notice, tentative South Lyon allocation. Additionally included is a letter from Haven requesting funds for the city of South Lyon. Requirements tonight is we open the public hearing, hear any public comments, and close the public hearing. And later on tonight's agenda, we will present and vote for the 2023 CDBG application and allocation.
Thank you, City Manager Zelnik, and we will open the public hearing for the CDBG at 7:54.
Now would be the time, Mayor, if anybody from the public wanted to speak before City Council, allow them to come to the podium and direct and give information on why, where they feel that the funds should actually be allocated.
Thank you for that. These can get a little confusing for even those of us that have been up here a while. So without there being any public comment, we will close the public comment at 7:55. And we will now move on to new business this evening. Consider CDBG application projects for the city of South Lyon.
The 2023 application deadline is Friday, November, or December 23rd. On today's meeting, November 28th, 2022, at the regularly scheduled City Council meeting, we held a public hearing relating to the CDBG funds allocated to the city of South Lyon. Our allocation funding is $28,511. The suggestion is that the city will continue to use those allocations for the 2023 to support projects that we have funded in recent years, which has been the South Lyon Senior Center and Haven. I've attached information to the supporting documentations. So tonight, possible courses of action is approve the 2023 CDBG application for the tentative funding of $28,511, which South Lyon Senior Center will get $23,511, and Haven $5,000. And these are the selected projects as identified it. Or if you do choose to, different projects, or choose not to submit the application for funds, you can make that motion as well.
Councilmember Kennedy, you have a guess? City Attorney, am I on me?
I don't know how technical this needs to be, but generally, when you have a public hearing that's required by statute, open and close it by motion of the council members. So just to be safe, because I'm not sure how technical this needs to be for the CDBG funding, you might want to just reopen the hearing by majority vote, have the public hearing again, and close the public hearing by majority vote. I'm sorry.
No, that's perfectly fine. You ever, yeah, when I start to get out in front of myself like that, you, you just...
I was going to let it go, but then when I checked with Tricia, they might, it's not worth it.
No, I agree. Let's get it right, so.
I have a wrinkle, yeah.
My, my apologies. So if I could get a motion, Councilmember Hanson.
Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll make the motion to open the public hearing in regards to the CDBG funding.
A second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes? We'll go with 7:58. And if there is no public comment, I'll entertain a motion to close the public comment. Councilmember Hanson.
I make the motion to end the public comment regarding the 2023 CDBG funding.
City Clerk Deaton, could I get a roll call vote, please?
Dill?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Terrence?
Yes.
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 Yes. Closing time for the public hearing, 7:59. Now that we are back on track here, back to new business number one. Consider CDBG application projects for the city of South Lyon. Councilmember Kennedy.
I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to approve the selected projects. As identified for the 2023 CDBG program, $28,511 to be distributed. South Lyon Senior Center, $23,511, and Haven for $5,000.
A second. We have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Moser. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you lead us in a roll call vote?
Apple?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Motion passes. I have the privilege of working in the Center for Active Adults throughout the year. I have the privilege of working in the Center for Active Adults throughout the year, and, uh, both of those, Haven and the Center, make a impact in our community weekly. So, um, thank you for that. We'll move on to new business number two this evening, first reading amendment of purchasing ordinance to increase the value of purchases requiring ci- city council approval and competitive bidding, and to clarify authority for emergency purchases.
At recent city council meetings during our auto presentation, there have been comments and discussions bec- by city council about increasing the values of purchases requiring council approval and competitive bidding to eliminate the additional time and cost associated with departments having to obtain council approval for routine budgeted purchases of supplies, materials, and equipment, and services at values that do not warrant the staff costs relating to presenting lower value purchases for approval and city council review and approval. The proposed ordinance amendment increases the value of purchases requiring council approval from five thousand dollars to ten thousand dollars, as in section two dash two-two-two. The proposed amendment also increases the value of purchases requiring competitive bidding as defined in the ordinance from ten thousand to fifteen thousand. Thus purchases of up to fifteen thousand dollars can be made in the Oakland Market and must be supported by three written quotes, which may be obtained verbally or in writing, which is current city practice. Purchases over fifteen thousand dollars must be approved by city council and be done by competitive bidding. The proposed ordinance amendment also amends section two, two-two-five, increasing the value for reporting to city council emergency expenditures from five thousand to ten thousand dollars. We've attached information regarding the proposed ordinance amendment and possible course of action to approve, deny, or postpone, or ta- table the first reading of proposed ordinance amendment. We'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, myself, the, uh, Patricia is also here, as well as the city attorney, we've all been working on this for the last few months.
Councilmember Kennedy?
I'd like to go ahead and make the, uh, the motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance. To amend the purchasing ordinance, Article six, purchasing, Chapter two, administration of the code of ordinances of the city of South Lyon as presented.
A second. We have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Moser, do we have any further discussion? Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I'm, uh, just questioning the idea of the, uh, the oral discussions with bidding. Why, why can't we, I mean, especially something at fifteen thousand dollars, seems like that's a, a number that's large enough to warrant having people commit to a document that would hold their feet to the fire. What, what brought that up?
Well, we just raised the limits on every one of the current, what's within the current ordinance, it was five thousand dollars, that moved to ten, what was ten thousand dollars moved to fifteen. They will still get bids, they're just written down by when they can make contact to them, instead of necessarily, if somebody has to supply a written documentation, waiting for that to occur, having that being delivered, that's valued for twenty days or thirty days, and the other ones coming in, but they still do get information and they get, um, competitive bids. So it's just not, if you're speaking of getting an actual written one, there is that limit, but ab- above that, there still are submitted documents that are done for items over fifteen thousand dollars, as submitted in like in a closed packet and due on specific dates.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this was one of the reasons, uh, that, uh, prompted me to run originally for city council, was to, um, upgrade a little bit some of our business practices in the city. Uh, the, this particular amendment to the ordinance is long, long, long overdue. Um, and, and I think, uh, in this case, it's probably very timely, uh, because we right now are in a, an extremely volatile market of, um, inflation, we have supply chain, distribution issues, shortages, we have transportation fluctuations in terms of cost, in terms of availability of fuels. And, and I think what we need to do, if we are going to provide our department heads with the most amount of efficiency in making business decisions for the city, we, we need to remove some of this bureaucratic layer of having to approve what, what, um, uh, the auditors called, our CPA firm, Plant Moran, are these micro, uh, purchases. I mean, there's absolutely no reason at all why, uh, some highly talented, uh, department heads, uh, should be hamstrung, uh, for time, uh, while they're waiting for a city council meeting, when, when that two-week period could result in a change of interest rate, it could, uh, result in a change of a lot of things. So I think that this expedites, uh, their decision-making process, um, really, I think if you look at the statute, uh, that's being amended, uh, we're not changing anything but numbers. So that's all that's changing, and it's consistent with what has already been done, uh, at the, uh, federal level. So I want to, um, say again that I, I think this is just long, long overdue, and I'm glad to see this is finally, uh, coming here. Besides, I have confidence in our department heads, uh, in the decisions that they're making. Uh, I don't have to micromanage their decisions, uh, they know what they're doing, they know how to bid stuff, they know equipment that needs to be handled. Uh, and additionally, a- any argument that somebody would make, and Paul, I want to thank you for having this discussion with me on this, is, um, anybody who wants to know what purchases are being made, we could always ask, uh, that the department head include, uh, whatever purchases they are making under the, this new dollar amount, you know, if it's fifteen thousand or ten, uh, and, and maybe put it in their weekly report, FYI, you know? Didn't come before council, but this is a purchase that I made, uh, this week, and, and so that way we can continue to track the budget. Uh, so, uh, for anybody who feels they, they have to micromanage, there's an opportunity, I think, from a reporting standpoint, to include that information. Additionally, I think it's important for the public to understand, is that what we are talking about are purchases that council has already approved in a budget. So it's not like department heads are going out on a wing and just going out and purchasing what they want to purchase. Uh, this council has had every opportunity to sit in budget meetings, which run pretty much February, March, and part of April, and sometimes in, in May, uh, to look at those budgets and see what these department heads are proposing for, um, for expenditures. And, and so it doesn't come as a surprise as to what these purchases are that these department heads are making, 'cause we've already approved it in the budget. Once you approve that budget in, in May, um, you pretty much know that these department heads are gonna be on the program now of, of effectuating that budget and making those purchase expenditures. So those are my arguments in favor of these amendments, and I would hope that council would approve it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell. Did we have any further discussion, we do have a motion and a second on the floor. Councilmember Hanson, go ahead.
Ju- just real quick, I wanna echo a lot of what Maggie said, um, in regards to the confidence that this, um, city council has of the, uh, staff in making these sorts of financial decisions. Um, in making this increase, it's definitely a reflection of the trust and confidence that we have in the making those decisions and us not needing to micromanage them. So I'm very pleased that this amendment is before us for, for approval, because, uh, now we are bringing that confidence up to the now, and to this time with this volatile market, and, uh, with the inflation of these, these costs. So, thank you so much for bringing this up for vote.
Alright, we have a motion and a second on the floor, City Clerk Deaton, could you lead us in a roll call vote, please? Yep, you're fine.
Kibble?
Yeah.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Chris Plow?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Housecat?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes. We'll move on to the budget this evening, did anyone have any comments or talking points on the budget tonight? Okay. We will again open the floor for a public comment this evening, please remember to state your name and address, and remember the two-minute time limit.
Good evening, Carl Richards again. Uh, I just wanna bring, uh, up to date on a brief topic that many people often wonder about, and, uh, rather than go long, I thought I'd just make it into two comments. Our wonderful house across the street, two-three-four West Liberty Street, I talked to the owner, builder, developer, uh, today, and I've talked with him many times. His name is Carl Kroll, okay, and that's spelled with a K, uh, rather than a C. And, uh, he's increasing the occupancy of the home from seven people to eleven. He's putting in four new bathrooms that there weren't, that did not exist in the upstairs. And he's at present, he's holding, he's, he's installing central air conditioning. That wasn't historically there, I'm sure, but he's trying to hold to a historical, uh, presence in the reconstruction and redevelopment of the home, which is quite Victorian history. Uh, anyway, uh, in case people wanna know, um, that house has been ongoing for quite some time, and it's, it's progress, work in order underway, and I'm glad to see it. And, uh, it won't be open for tours though till maybe the middle of next year, uh, 'cause I asked about that for our historical society. Anyway, just thought I'd mention this and bring everybody up to date on it, it's right across the street. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richards. This time, we'll close the floor for public comment, we'll move on to the managers' report with City Managers Zelnik.
A few items, Mr. Mayor, uh, up cutting meeting on December twelfth, we have HRC in attendance to discuss, uh, some of the road improvement program. Also, uh, discuss the past experiences working with them as our engineers, uh, for the last, uh, dozen-plus years, working on different projects. So give council the opportunity to ask specific questions of them. Uh, I'd like council, if they can, forward some questions to me, and I can prepare them in a, an, um, setting where, uh, each one of you will be able to see, um, and be prepared for other questions that may be asked, and try to keep it in a, a fashion where we can move this forward with the, with the engineers in attendance. Uh, City Hall work still continues, we're waiting for the proper operation of our HVAC sys- HVAC system. Today was a good day at City Hall, we finally got some, uh, normal heat during the day, which is for the first time since the system's been installed over the last several months. The DPW paving project has been completed. Uh, also, the fire chief and I have been working on the Washington Area Mutual Aid Agreement with our city attorney, we hope to bring that to city council in the near future, as well as discussion regarding our, uh, ARPA funds. Also, four-sixty-four La- South Lafayette, we have a, our for bid regarding hazardous removal and demolition of the city-owned building at, at that location. The bids are due on, uh, December twentieth. And last, um, I wanna offer congratulations to Chief Silvick on his retirement. I, um, I am definitely sad to, uh, see him leave, enjoyed working with him over the last four years. Over the last several months, I've had the opportunity to work real close with, um, Lieutenant Doug Baki and Chief Silvick, in which I refer to them as to-be and not-to-be. Um, they've, um, they're a good working relationship, and I know, um, with Chris retiring, um, he's definitely gonna be missed, but I know the city is in good hands, and Chief, I wanna thank you for that, and due to your tutelage and your communication with Doug, that's the reason why we are staying in good hands. So, thank you. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, thank you, did anyone have anything for City Managers Zelnik tonight? Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Um, I, I'm not quite sure how this comes for Port Council, if they're interested, but I had, uh, um, an idea for, um, a project in the city, and, and it would require, uh, purchasing a piece of property that's for sale in town. Do you want me to go over it now?
I don't know if, I think maybe should, maybe try to address it to me, maybe within a email or something, so we can discuss it. Um, I think that would be probably a, uh, better format to do so.
Okay, alright.
You're okay with that?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else got anything for Paul tonight? Okay. We will move on to council comments this evening, and Councilmember Kibble, why don't you kick us off tonight?
Oh, okay. Well, everybody is looking forward to the, uh, the weekend's event, so, um, I'm hoping that we have good weather and it's conducive to getting everybody all having fun, so... Um, I, I did wanna end up relaying, I, I'd asked Paul a number of times about, uh, if somebody had made contact with some business or another, and it dawned on me that, uh, what I hadn't done was, uh, outline the idea of why it's really a, uh, very valuable, uh, opportunity for us to reach out to people that have taken their business and their time and located into our backyard, why it would be in our best interest to end up having a relationship with them. Um, those are the kinds of things that grow, and in the event that, um, you have the right, the right kind of a relationship and kismet, those are the people that will end up allowing us to fund other different, uh, festivals and things like that, something that they might end up getting behind. Um, I didn't wanna end, I, I, my, my point hadn't been to try to put you on the spot, it was simply to try to get the idea that there's opportunities that can be made by having a good relationship with people that have committed to this location, and I just wanted to make sure that that was the takeaway from this, not that, uh, you weren't doing something. Uh, that's pretty much all I had, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kibble, uh, Councilmember Moser?
Thank you, um, we have lots going on this weekend, so, hope to see y'all down there. But other than that, I just wanted to say, uh, thanks, Chris, did a great job. I hired in a year after you did, so, I worked with you for many, many years, you made them memorable, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moser, uh, Councilmember Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So along with everyone else, uh, first and foremost, I want to, uh, thank Chief Silvick for his years of dedication to the city of South Lyon, and I certainly wish you the very best in your retirement. Next, if you didn't have the opportunity to attend the Village Strings, uh, Christmas concert that was held at the Village Chapel this weekend, they will again be performing at the Java House on Sunday, December eleventh, from one P.M. until four P.M. So make plans to attend and enjoy some great holiday music. I also wanna congratulate the, uh, South Lyon High School Girls Swim and Dive Team for finishing in eighth place in the overall state competition this month. Even with a reduced squad, they delivered an amazing performance, congratulations, ladies. And finally, as, uh, has already been mentioned, let's make plans to come out this Saturday with so many events to enjoy. Whether it's the Holiday Spectacular Parade, Breakfast with Santa at the Lake Street Tavern, the Craft Show at the South Lyon High School, the lighting of the giant Christmas tree at Heinemann's, or the touring of the Christmas house, there's bound to be something for everyone, so please make plans to attend. So all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy, a lot of good reminders in there, Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I also would like to thank Chief Silvick for, uh, his years of service in the city of South Lyon. I think if there was any example of law enforcement, of what they do for a community, um, I think i- it is embodied in, uh, Chief Silvick. Uh, you've brought tremendous, uh, esteem to the role of law enforcement, you have managed your department extremely well, and, um, I just wish that you had been in this position seven years ago, eight years ago. Um, you've made that big of a difference in this community. Uh, you have a wonderful family, your wife is absolutely incredible, and I wanna definitely thank her, 'cause we know the real mastermind behind, behind your success, so... Um, so the both of you have, have, um, sacrificed a lot for our city, so I wanna also make sure I thank her too, uh, for her great, uh, sacrifices that she's made in time when he has been here in South Lyon, so thank you so much too. Uh, so, uh, have a, a great new second life and a new journey, uh, stay in touch, and, um, looking forward to working with, um, the new chief. So, uh, um, Doug, you're gonna do a great job, you've got a great personality, you've got a great brain, um, you're just gonna do very, very well, so, a lot of confidence in you. Take care.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell, Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, with us, uh, kind of going into the holiday, uh, season and whatnot, I wanted to remind everyone, um, if it's, uh, as simple as, uh, collecting canned goods or volunteering some of their time, community, uh, is how we get through some tough times, and some of our neighbors might not be having as easy of a time, especially during this time, as maybe we are. And even if it's as simple as, uh, collecting canned goods, or, um, picking up trash on the side of the road, or, um, ringing a bell in front of bushes for Salvation Army, um, seeing if active faith needs any help, or even the Aquinas with their tree sale. I mean, these are things that, um, you know, just come to mind, you know, in giving back to the community especially, um, for those maybe in need, or, or, um, that are able to help, um, you know, give something back. So, definitely want... wanted to bring that up, especially with us going into December and into the new year of 2023. So, um, and finally, I, I want to echo a lot of what my colleagues have already said. Uh, thank you, Chief, so much for your years of service. I don't like calling it retirement, I like calling it, uh, to the next adventure. So, the adventure's not over, it's just the next chapter. So thank you so much, Chief, for all that you've done.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanson. Councilmember Dilg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I unfortunately was not here last, uh, our last meeting, I was sick, but I did not, so I did not get a chance to thank, um, Lisa Deaton and all of the office staff for the amazing job they did at Election Day. I again had a front-row seat to it, um, working at the polls, and it, it is just run so amazingly smooth and fair, and I just encourage anybody who still doesn't think, um, that it can be done that way to come out and, uh, and join us on an election and, uh, and help work at the polls. And just, I just want to say thank you. You guys just do such an amazing job, and, uh, really helped us with a few, uh, weird issues this time, and it's, uh, it's good to see. Um, I also wanted to say, you know, we have such amazing business owners in South Lyon that have done, that do so many things, and I just wanted to call out one. Um, my daughter and I got to help, uh, the Witch's Hat, uh, deliver meals, uh, in South Lyon, in the South Lyon area, um, on Thanksgiving Day, and, um, they cooked and donated and, and arranged delivery for five hundred and twenty-eight meals, um, to people in this area. And that's a, it's a huge expense for them, that's a huge amount of time, um, huge amount of commitment, and, um, just really appreciate them and what they do for South Lyon, and, um, want to thank all the people that helped deliver on Thanksgiving Day, uh, you know, missed the parade, so that they could, uh, deliver that food. Um, and also, I want to say, uh, thank you to Chief Sylvek. Uh, when I, um, first came on city council, I remarked at how, uh, wonderful the leadership of South Lyon was, and how, um, there are people who have a lot of distrust for, uh, police and, and, uh, and I was ve- said how very impressed I was with all the leaders, with Paul, with, um, Chief Sylvek, and the mayor. Um, and I, I always tell people that, um, if they, if they think that something's going on with the police in South Lyon, I always say, "I have the utmost respect and trust with our chief, and I don't think that there's any reason to ever think that, um, that we shouldn't." So I just want to thank you for your amazing job. Uh, look forward to, and want to congratulate the new chief, uh, Chief Baki, um, and just say thank you and congratulations. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Dilg. A huge weekend in town. Apparently, guy named Chris Kringle might be around, so, um, you know, he tends to bring a crowd with him, so hopefully we'll see everyone on Saturday in the Historical Village. Um, I'm looking forward to that, and obviously a day-long event. So, um, you know, if you get gassed early, maybe to go home, take a quick nap, you know, get back out there later. Um, so, uh, I'm going to nap early, and I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to do the parade, and we'll be over there then. So, uh, hopefully with the whole family, as long as everyone can stay healthy. Um, Chief Sylvek, I mean, what can you say about this guy? Uh, pro's pro, um, probably has, uh, one of my favorite, uh, closing lines in his email address, and I, I wish I could think of it right now, but, um, it's something about, um, if something is below you, then, um, leadership is above you, and so-
Serving is below you, then leadership is beyond you.
Thank you. Thank you. I love that. I, I love that I get to read that every time when I'm copying on an email with you, and he's, he's proven that. Uh, you know, I don't care who you are up here or in the community, whenever you have a changing of the guard, um, whether that's a fire chief, or police chief, or city manager, um, if you're not a little worried about it, then I don't know what's wrong with you. Um, but I am not worried about this one at all, because, uh, Lieutenant Baki, or future Chief Baki, is a, uh, is South Lyon through and through. And so I know that, I look forward to working with you, um, and, uh, I wish Chief Sylvek all the best with his family and going forward, and it's been an honor to serve alongside you. So, um, with that, um, normally, we'd look for a motion to adjourn, but tonight, we do have hopefully a short closed session, um, and so I will look for a motion to go into closed session. Councilmember Kirtzwell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, before the motion is made, I, um, would it be appropriate for me to address some of my concerns about the closed meeting tonight? Um, my experience has been that when a closed meeting is being called, and you are relying on the attorney-client privilege document, whatever that document is going to be, uh, council has been provided an opportunity to review that document prior to the meeting. Uh, in all my years being on council, this is the first time in which an agenda was published stating a closed meeting, uh, um, under the, the section, um, of the Open Meetings Act, uh, regarding, uh, particular exemption to put us in the closed meeting, uh, without, um, the supporting documentation for it. So why is that important to me? Because issues may come up in that closed meeting, that if I have a conflict of interest, I would like to be able to excuse myself, uh, from that, so I don't have an opportunity to do my due diligence on that. Additionally, I, I think that, uh, it, it is not fair to council to expect to, uh, listen to whatever this issue is, or whatever this document has, um, without some ability to contemplate and think about what this issue is. So, now we're all clueless, nobody knows what this is about. Um, additionally, I think when it comes to the attorney-client privilege, um, I did have an opportunity today to read some of the case law. And, and, and I think the case law, um, is, is very good at supporting the position that the attorney-client privilege letter should be provided prior to, uh, the actual going into the closed session, because it gives council the opportunity to question whether it is an appropriate basis to even go into a closed meeting. You know, the, the closed meaning exemption for the attorney-client privilege means that legal advice has to be provided. It can't be, um, speculation, it can't be, um, an opinion on bargaining, I think Booth calls it, uh, the Booth case that I looked at, negotiations, or economic impact, or economic consequences. It has to be an actual legal matter, and if it's not pertaining to the, a legal issue, then there's no basis to go into the closed meeting. So I don't have an opportunity to scrutinize that letter prior to the motion being made, because it's my understanding, we do not even get the letter until we are actually in the closed meeting. So, um, I, I'm just raising my objections, and I will not be making the motion to go into the closed meeting tonight, because I will not be voting to go into the closed meeting, because I just feel that I do not have sufficient information to carry on a decent and intelligent conversation in whatever time it's going to take. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your time.
City Attorney Hamamay, do you have any feedback on that?
Well, I've been a municipal attorney for over twenty years, and pre-COVID, I've always brought the attorney-client privilege communication into the closed session, distributed the communication, allowed council the time to-
The mic for him. Oh. She should put the mic, okay. Thank you, City Attorney Hamamay.
Pre-COVID, I have always, in my twenty years as a municipal attorney, brought attorney-client privilege communication to a closed session, distributed the correspondence in closed session, given each council member an opportunity to read and digest that correspondence, and be available to discuss and answer questions on that correspondence. Absolutely, of course, that letter will have a legal opinion, which is the reason it's attorney-client privileged. If I were to give any indication in the agenda of what that material is, I would then be divulging a reason that you're going to, into closed session, which I cannot do. You're going to have to trust me. If I'm asking to discuss attorney-client privilege communication with you, there is a reason it can't be discussed in public, and it's lawful, this correspondence that you're going to get meets the requirements of the Open Meetings Act, and there's nothing unlawful about the way I'm handling it. During COVID, it was hard to do it this way, obviously, because we were on Zoom. So everybody in my office kind of changed courses. We did distribute the correspondence in advance for that reason. It is not the preferred approach. And frankly, I always re- uh, collect all of the letters at the end of the closed session, and that is all to ensure the secrecy of the closed session and the reason we're going into closed session.
I'm going to go to Councilmember Kibble first. Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I think much in the same light as the, uh, managers or directors being able to, um, be trusted as far as, uh, you know, purchases and things, I fully am confident that you're not going to put us in a bind, so I'm, I'm quite ready to do this.
As long as no one else has anything, Councilmember Kirtzwell, go ahead.
I, I guess I don't understand, because in the past, we have received the letter, and you don't have to divulge anything. I, I, all you have to say is, attorney, you know, you're going to, you're going to discuss the attorney-client privilege letter, you know, whatever the date is on that letter, so that there is some reference, that it's not an attorney-client letter from, you know, a year ago, or six months ago, so we know that, at least the date of the letter. And, and nobody has, there has never been a leak from this council, ever, of, uh, attorney-client information that was included in an envelope, in their packet, for them to review and digest over a weekend. I don't ever recall this. And, and maybe this has been your practice, and, and maybe I'm the first one that's challenged it, because I just, I, I am for wanting as much information when I go into any meeting, whether it's an open meeting or a closed meeting, um, so that I can take a look and see exactly what's going on. I'm more concerned about conflicts of interest. You know, I don't want to sit there and read a letter and then find out I've got a conflict of interest.
Well, you're going to read the letter, whether I give it to you in advance, or I give it to you at the closed session.
Right. But at least I don't have to go into a closed session and discuss it. You know, at least, at least if I read the letter and I say, "You know what, I got a conflict here. I really don't think I should be participating in this closed meeting because of my conflict of interest," then I don't have to be at that meeting. So I, what you're doing is you are preventing me from an opportunity. Now, we'll see what's in the letter, but if I get a hint or a whiff, I'm out of here, so.
And that's acceptable.
Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Hanson, go ahead.
I'd like to make the motion to go into closed session.
I'll support. City Attorney Hamamay, is it essential that we list the reason we are going into that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay, go ahead, and thanks, Councilmember Hanson.
I'd like to make the motion to go into closed session, present to the Open Meetings Act, MCUL 15 dot 268, W-I-H, to consider attorney-client privilege communication.
I believe it's a one.
Oh.
Just, just, just making sure we're getting it right. I believe it's one H.
One. My contact was getting foggy there, sorry, Mayor.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilmember Hanson, supported by Councilmember Kibble. City Clerk Deaton, would you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Moser?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
No.
Enery?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Alstair?
Yes. Thank you, motion passes. Um, City Attorney Hamamay, I know I do this to you every other time that we go into this. Am I supposed to make an announcement that if we're going to take any action on this, that we will open the doors and-
You will open the doors either way.
She gets me on that every time. Thank you.
If we're done with closed sessions, you will continue to lead. It may very well be just to adjourn the meeting, but we will come back out of closed session.
Thank you very much for your help on that.